Okay. It's seven o'clock. I call this meeting of the Denville Township Board of Education to order. This meeting of the Denville Township Board of Education is being held in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act. Notice this meeting was provided to the Daily Record and/or the Star Ledger of Morris County, has been delivered to the township clerk, and has been posted on the bulletin board of the Board of Education office and at each of the school buildings in the district. Roll call, please.
Mr. Anderson will not be here tonight. Mrs. Deluna?
Here.
Mr. Luer?
Here.
Mrs. Lindsey? Mr. Cass?
Here.
Mr. Napoloni? Mr. Capello?
Here. We will hold off on the Pledge of Allegiance. We have a need for an executive session tonight. Mr. Luer, would you care to move us through executive session?
Sure. I move we go into executive session. I move we convene an executive session in accordance with Section 8 of the Open Public Meetings Act. The purpose of this closed section will be to discuss negotiations, legal and/or personnel issues. Minutes of this session will be made available to the public when the need for confidentiality no longer exists. I'll second.
Ayes? Hi? Ayes? Okay. We're in executive session. Welcome. We are out of executive session and into the normal public portion of our meeting. We held off the Pledge of Allegiance until now, so if everyone will please rise. The flag is back there.
... to the flag. And to the Republic, which stands unafraid, under God, indivisible, with the legitimacy of justice for all.
Okay. Thank you, everybody, for coming. I don't believe we have any special presentations tonight, so we'll move right to superintendent's comments.
Sure. After tonight, you will be approving the CUSAC three-year extension, I hope, and we'll send that to the county tomorrow. We'll be done with that. We also have, I wanted to bring up the middle school guidance meetings. We've had these ten-minute meetings. Good news is, over half the parents chose to attend the meeting, which was very positive. And Dr. Cullis and I went to a joint meeting of the MHRD districts, and MHRD districts were all talking about how they really liked the fact that we put in place these meetings. And I'm not sure if everybody understands the reason why we do it, but it's really to inform the parents and the students of all the offerings and different selections they can make going forward. And sometimes, some of those decisions they make for freshman year does affect them throughout their high school career, so it's important for everybody to be informed. I also wanted to say that the snow day delay today went great. Our staff did a tremendous job. The town did a tremendous job getting everything ready and up and ready for us. We probably could have opened on time, but we felt like we wanted to give everybody a little bit more time to make some more room at the bus stops and also in the streets. I know the town was working overnight, clearing out some of the snow and using heavy machinery to move the snow. So I think we got the plowing done, but we needed to actually move the snow to make room for the kids and people. Sometimes, when you do it all, it looks great, and then when you see all these cars there and people, it messes it up. So we needed a little bit more time to get that done and use the safety of the students as our guide. We also did exactly what the other districts of MHRD did, except for Rockaway Borough that had to close, but that was because of their sidewalks. From what I've seen around the state, most of the districts who have a lot of walking and sidewalks had closed for the whole day because the people just didn't clean off their sidewalks and they didn't want kids walking the street yet. And that's it for my report.
Okay. Thank you. Any Assistant Superintendent's comments?
The February Parent Academy has been postponed to March, so the topic of next generation of science standards will be the first Wednesday of March and combined with an opportunity for students to come with their parents and do some STEM activities that we'll be running, as well as the seventh grade parents who might be interested in taking the high school honors biology as eighth graders. So we're running that parent opportunity to hear information from the high school and myself on that evening.
Great.
And this concludes the Assistant Superintendent's report.
Thank you very much. Business administrators' comments?
We met with the Finance Committee last Wednesday to discuss preliminary budget. At this point, we would like to ask the Finance Committee if it's okay to meet at least twice a month to be able to finalize at least a preliminary budget before the deadline to submit to the county. The latest day we can submit a preliminary budget to the county is March 22. We do have a work session on March 14, which we would like to attempt to approve the preliminary budget, if it's okay with everyone. And that will be my comment.
Okay. Thank you very much. It being 7:35, I am going to open up for public discussion on agenda items. If anybody would care to make a comment or have questions, please approach the podium and sign in. And I see we have our newly minted town council representative. Welcome. Thank you. Anyone at all? Okay. Seeing none, I will close the public session comments at 7:37. All right. And on to old business. Mrs. Deluna, would you care to move us through old business items?
Sure. I'd like, as a block, that we move to vote on the items A, B, and C on the agenda item under number three. The reports for December, Treasury of School Monies, the Board Secretary Report, HIB, Student Enrollment at the Medical Office, application for CUSAC equivalency for three years, HIV/EBV/RS report, and the minutes from the work session regular meetings in December.
I'll second.
Thank you. Mr. Cass? Any questions or comments?
Yes. On the reported student enrollment, is that like a required new format? You know, the older one we used to get, the Fierce Periodic, where we have the enrollment by class at each school, as well as a summary at the end comparing our student enrollment. Our current student enrollment was prior year to date, and I find that very helpful in understanding the size of the classes and, you know, where we were compared to last year.
We can have that added back in.
Yeah, I'd like to see that. I find that more useful than this other one.
Okay. I think that's just a change of personnel, so we can add that back. Student enrollment, like it was.
Keep up the information now that I agree with what the board said. The whole thing.
Okay, no problem.
Thank you.
Be great.
That's it for me.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay. Nothing, then. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Deluna?
Yes.
Mr. Luer?
Yes.
Mrs. Lindsey?
Yes.
Mr. Cass?
Yes.
Mr. Capello?
Yes. Okay. On to new business. I will move us through Personnel, if that's okay. I would like to move items under Personnel, 1 through 4, as a block.
I'll second.
Any questions or comments?
Yes. I noticed here we had the school secretary at Riverview and the nurse at Riverview putting in some extra time for kindergarten registration. So one question I would have is, can any of this be done online by the parents before they get there? Would that save some time and improve the operating efficiency of the process?
Right now, the forms aren't interactive, if that's what you mean. They are available, though. The people do have the forms in advance. But our policy dictates that we actually receive these in person to prove residency of everyone. So they must show the attachment to address and ID, but they have to do that in person.
Okay.
And these are for night appointments, I'm guessing?
Right.
Evening appointments? Okay. Anyone else? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Deluna?
Yes.
Mr. Luer?
Yes.
Mrs. Lindsey?
Yes.
Mr. Cass?
Yes.
Mr. Capello?
Yes. Okay. On to Finance. Mrs. Deluna, you mind if I call on you again?
No, it's fine. I'd like to make a motion to move the items under letter B in your agenda under Finance, items 1 through 4. That includes the donation from Denville Social Services, an amount of $5,000 for the lunch program for economically disadvantaged students, a $750 donation from the Ocean Awareness Student Contest, won by Valley U student, Prasham, I don't know how to say his name.
Mankar.
Mankar. Item 3, Board of Ed approved the disposal of projector equipment within all three schools as itemized with tag numbers and attached list, and the Board approved the checklists in the following amounts as listed on the agenda.
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Cass. Any questions or comments?
I'd like to move once again, instead of asking, saying, "Denville Social Services helping out in the lunch program, and then pick up the economically disadvantaged students." And I also have a question on the projector, disposal of projector equipment. I know for some of our tech equipment, you were able to sell it someplace. Do you all, is it being sold, or is it disposed of?
This needs to be resolved, that you already dispose it, and then we'll sell it.
Okay.
So we will go out and try to find somebody to buy it, and then you'll approve the sale of it.
Okay.
If we can find somebody who wants to buy it. Yeah. But we have to have this before we can actually try to find somebody to buy it.
I just wanted to make sure, what we're going in a dumpster, on your recycling place, you can't.
Yeah, we might even get somebody just to take it, which would be better than us taking it somewhere.
Right.
That might happen.
Yeah, there's a place where you literally dump it, so you can take it. Do you make the door needs to be?
Yeah.
This is exciting about this Ocean Awareness Student Contest.
Yeah, I printed it because I couldn't tell.
Yeah, can you, do you have any background on that?
A student entered this contest and won, and that was the donation that he won. I don't know much about the contest. It was, basically, we got a letter saying that you won. Because of this student, he put his name in for this contest, he won the money, and the money goes to the school, and the principal will have a meeting to discuss on how they want to spend the $700.
That's great. Anyone else? Okay. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Deluna?
Yes.
Mr. Luer?
Yes, but I have to abstain from check 66911.
Mrs. Lindsey?
Yes, but I need to abstain on check 6847.
Mr. Cass?
Yes.
Mr. Capello?
Yes. Mrs. Lindsey, would you care to move us through this?
No one has any objection. I would like to move the motions, 1 through 7, as a block.
Second.
Thank you.
And I feel that we do all of those, there's filters, request. We will be approving tonight the school district calendar for 2016-17, which is in our packet, and which closely aligns to the high schools on the major break. We're approving the reading logs of books to remove from the library we're seeing right now. We leave 205 books, will be made available to teachers if they offer to the classroom library names discarded, or the kids have a chance to work on it if they want.
You leave them out for people, too, yeah.
Okay. We'll also be discarding a science book, and I'm happy to say that we're, hopefully we'll be approving another chance for our summer education program, right there in Denver. You sent us information on it, Mr. Capello. It looks really good.
And the teachers are owning it, which is good. It's their baby.
And it looks like you changed the format quite a bit from last year, so hopefully this time, you know, it's been more consistent. More like a weekly.
I think the biggest thing is, it's really not me running. They're taking the lead, and I think it's great that they want to run one of them.
No, I think it's fantastic. And I know in the past, when I had kids who were, you know, in the K age group, my kids did go to camp a day. You got to pick some of the different ones, and pick the other much of the day as you want to spend. I heard about that. Also, approval flight is, to approve permission of a teacher from Arkansas, who's in charge of STEM activity, the leaders there, going to come in and speak to Valley U Middle School students for teaching about babysitting skills. And then there's the workshop. And this is what I'm coming.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions on any of these? Could I ask what the, flipping the AA classroom, what that involves?
Yes.
I'm just curious what the workshop is.
It is the arts, the art program. So how to use a blended environment technology and have students prepare at home and watch certain pieces, and then work those skills into the actual art class where they're producing it. I do, I see one change on this, under letter C. There is no cost for, because we are sending five members to this NJSHA conference, we are paying for four, and one is free. So Jamie Jones, who was our last one, she registered, and she, there is no 100, it's just a mileage.
Okay. So.
So I will move it as such, crossing off the one and two. She'll owe the mileage?
No, mileage, it's just mileage.
Just the mileage? Okay.
And the four. Barb, you accept that as a family amendment?
Yes.
Thank you so much.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Is everybody okay with that change? And roll call, please.
Mrs. Deluna?
Yes.
Mr. Luer?
Yes.
Mrs. Lindsey?
Yes.
Mr. Cass?
Yes.
Mr. Capello?
Yes. Policy. Mr. Luer, would you care to move us through the policy revisions?
I'd like to move the number one, under policy revisions, that's a modification, of the Township of Denville, adopt the following policies and/or regulations as first or second reading adoption is indicated. In this case, we have 2416 programs for pregnant students first reading, and 5111 eligibility of resident, non-resident pupils, also first reading.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Cass. Any questions or comments?
I would just like to thank Mr. Forte for providing additional information about the policy on this. It never ceases to amaze me that, you know, you can get advice at one point in time and then, you know, although this is two years, I very quickly believe in this kind of plan.
I think it's also because the Comprehensive Equity Plan was something that, for some reason, the state just didn't require updating anymore. And now that they're requiring updating, that policy 2416 needs to be in there, so when we removed it, we have to put it back.
Yeah, well, for those of you in Long Island, we, as part of our New Jersey School Board Association dues, they went through our full manual and told us what was needed updated, what was no longer in compliance, what needed to be removed out there because it wasn't in compliance with the law. And that was one of the ones that we had to re-sign two years ago, and it was actually January two years ago. And so I was like, why is it coming back? But, yeah, it's, you know, never normal to hear in New Jersey, everything that you know is true changes.
Anyone else? Any questions? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Deluna?
Yes.
Mr. Luer?
Yes.
Mrs. Lindsey?
Yes.
Mr. Cass?
Yes.
Mr. Capello?
Yes. Buildings and grounds. Mr. Cass, would you care to move us through these?
I'd be happy to. I'd like to move on to building and grounds. Let's see, three motions here. First one is the Township of Denville Recreation Department. They use our facilities to run a summer camp here, June 24th, August 5th. They do a great job with the kids, and it really helps them out that, you know, they can use this facility here, both indoors and outdoors. The second one is to continue our security enhancements with an ad hoc committee. Now, I don't know if we want to insert the words "continue" to as opposed to "enhance" because we've been doing a lot of security, so this is a continuation of what we're doing. It's not like they're just enhancing it on the first go-around. And then, number three, is to proceed with a school facilities project consisting generally of partial roof replacement at Lakeview Elementary School and at Valley U Middle School. And we discussed this previously at our last meeting, to get going on the planning with our architect, and we got some people that weren't here the last time. So I just want to reemphasize that it's really critical that we start a major project like this early, because I've seen the past where they didn't get tabled up until late spring, mid-spring, early summer, and the next thing you know, the project's not getting done and gets behind. And the school repairs are critical for the rest of the infrastructure in the school. Just the roofs leak, it creates a tremendous amount of.
Don, I think we're going to need a second. We need a second before we can get into too much discussion.
He's out of roll. Second. You go.
Thank you, Mark. Sorry, Don, go ahead.
I'm done.
So this resolution's on top of the one that we already passed to hire the architect. This is needed for the state, for the state application.
Yeah.
The architect does it. And the good news, too, we have the resolution on here for the Denville Recreation Department. Next meeting, we'll have, actually in February, we'll have the resolutions to approve the use of the facilities for the Yankees Camp and the Giants Camp again at Riverview.
That's great. I need a roll call.
Yeah, I didn't see. I was looking for it.
I was going to say, just to clarify, so this is really just to be continued with the committee that met once in a while.
And it actually says continue.
Yeah. So it seems, twice a year, I think?
Continue, yeah.
Maybe a little more.
Continue an ad hoc committee.
Working progress.
Well, it's always going to be.
It's always going to be.
Plan for the non-planned event. There are things you can't plan for.
Anyone else? Is he okay? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Deluna?
Yes.
Mr. Luer?
Yes.
Mrs. Lindsey?
Yes.
Mr. Cass?
Yes.
Mr. Capello?
Yes. We don't have anything under transportation, so at this time, we'll move to good of the cause.
Excuse me.
That's you?
I had, just one thing, that we did have a committee meeting, and we discussed the two-tier bus project that's, you know, it's ongoing. We also discussed the school assignments, you know, south of Route 46 to Riverview. We have a policy in place for that, that, you know, looks like it needs to be updated and more generalized based on our needs every year, rather than, you know, redoing the policy and start rejuggling roads throughout the town. So that was an interesting discussion. We also talked about the Riverview pickup change at the committee meeting, so that's just going to be going into the year of February 1st, I think is the start date on that. But we talked about the fact that the cars would have to go up the hill, and the superintendent did talk to the police department, as well as the Department of Public Works, about, you know, keeping those roads clear during bad weather and everything, so it's easy access for the parents to get back there and pick up the kids.
That hill looked great today, too. I drove back there myself to make sure it was good, even though we're not using it yet, but they have it under control. It's good.
Thank you. Any other committee reports? Most of the committees haven't met yet.
Well, we met for Finance, along with BNG. I'll get some minutes out to you guys this week to highlight, you know, our bills list, we added two people, Everbank and Food Services, the free lunch vendors, you know, the recurring payments, so they'll look as highlighted on the bills list, so we can prepay, so we don't recur in, like, the discussion was, the small businesses, they shouldn't be penalized for the, I call it the goods, you know, to get paid in the whole accounting system, so.
That's for the free lunch program?
You know, just some flexibility.
We're going to pay them twice a month, because they're laying out the money for these 80 lunches.
Okay.
And then the things that were on the agenda, like the donations and the preliminary budget, and, so, we are going to have to meet, again, they're just preliminary numbers. Did that get something?
No, the best time would be, once the town releases the reevaluation data, so we can have an idea of what the budget costs are, we will, that would be the best time to have a meeting. So maybe we can get one in the middle of the month, something, say, after the tent.
Whatever.
Let me call the town hall to have an estimate of when they will have those numbers, and then we can plan a meeting after that, okay? Sounds good.
Okay. Thank you. I don't think we have any correspondence. Do we have any other discussion items? Anything anybody would like to discuss?
I would like to report out, I attended the CPAC meeting as the official board liaison through it, so thank you for that. I shared the document, I was officially made that again. I would like to share with everyone that they had a wonderful program put on in conjunction with our Director of Special Services and the parent, they did IEP and 504 Basic. So if anybody is not in or out there listening, if that's something that interests you, it is online. If you click on the tab on the left there on the website that says CPAC, you will find a pop link right there to it. You'll also find, they have a newsletter and other information, and the upcoming meetings that people are interested in, next month, Wednesday, February 17, will be all about summer camps and activities. And then on March 15, and you can see links to the parent newsletter on the website, they're doing a presentation on dyslexia and learning disabilities, it's being put on by Learning It's free for anyone to attend, they just ask if you RSVP, and they've actually opened it up to surrounding areas also, so we're hoping for a good turnout with that. And one other thing came up, which for those of you that were on the board last year, you know, came up then, too. They asked once again about if CPAC had any type of budgets that they could spend on things, and if you recall, last year, they made a recommendation to purchase certain textbooks that help teachers. I'm not actually sure now if I remember this about planning lessons on how to teach certain disabilities. This year, they were asking about doing, hopefully, something jointly with the surrounding towns, as Mr. Forte called them earlier, the Morris Hills.
MHRD sending districts.
MHRD sending districts, with the surrounding towns, but we all see them in the same town. They're looking at bringing in Jed Baker, and I told them to bring it to Dr. Cullis, since she plans all of our PD. It's something that they're looking at, and I guess through the conversations that the Director of Special Services and our Superintendent will have both aside, if it's a full day and maybe in conjunction with other towns, whether it's a full day or a part day, it could be part teacher, staff development, if only it's evening, it could still, definitely what else to be done, but Jed Baker here is very well-known in the state and the country for his social standing among others. So I'm excited that it looks like they're going to be able to work with CPAC on that, and I hope to them, so. And I don't know how the board feels, and I don't really know how, you know, the superintendent and the BA. I think, right now, it's, you know, if they find something that they really think has a value to the district, they should bring it to the channels, and I think it's really true of Grace.
Yeah. Yep. Well, I don't, it can come through you to Grace, too. And then Grace and Sandy will talk about it.
Right. We've all said that we would bring it back, but I, you know, I don't know in the future what I should do. Should it just come straight to Grace, or it'll be to bring it here? I don't know what we want to do.
I mean, probably if you bring it here, we're just going to push it back to Grace, because I guess Grace needs to buy in before Sandy does, and then Sandy brings it to me.
Right, that's what I said, so if she brings it to Sandy, then we know it's, okay. Very good. Thank you.
You can let them know that we're twelve, Grace and I, meet after the CPAC meeting, so.
It works well. Okay, very good. Well, yes, and as you said to me earlier, you already knew about it, it's already come through, so that's all right. So I'm pleased that we'll, it looks like we'll be working towards that, and hopefully like in other towns, so.
I had one other thing I forgot to mention before. We had our annual teacher training for security last week, on the 15th, it was last week, the week before. It was, we had every employee in the district at two different, at two different times, we ran a session here, we ran a session at River View, we spent an hour with the staff on school security. It focused mostly on Alice. We've been talking about Alice for a while here. Alice is a new way of doing a lockdown. It's basically, in a nutshell, a way to give teachers and staff members the right to make decisions after the lockdown's been called. Right now, before the Alice training, a lockdown was basically a lockdown, meaning if there was a lockdown right now, we'd all lock down over there, and whatever else happened outside, we would lock down over there. If we used the Alice method, we would start in a lockdown right here, but then we might be able to make some decisions, meaning if we saw that there was a person out there with a rifle shooting something, maybe we climb out the window. Those are the kinds of things that you think about. These are crazy things to think about in a school, but they're necessary now, and one of the things we talked about was the amount of school shootings there have been in America since Sandy Hook, and it's a staggering number. I don't remember it off the top of my head, but it's actually happened fourteen point, every fourteen point two days since Sandy Hook, there's been a shooting, this is not including other things, this is just shootings, on a school campus or a bus, somewhere in America, K-12 and college, every fourteen point two days since Sandy Hook. So obviously, these are things we need to talk about. I know, it's a scary thought, and we prefaced it with all the, it's scary, we get it, but we need to still talk about it. So we're learning this Alice program, which is starting to take off a little bit in New Jersey, but it's really a thing that's happened in Midwest, and it's just a different way of doing it. We've taught everybody that you don't think, you just, this is what you do, go over there and hide. And now we're saying, that's good, but you may need to also think. So the good, the great news of it is, we have Chief of Police who's on board, his team is on board, Mr. Scow, the Vice Principal of Lakeview runs this for us. We videoed it, we shared it with our people who couldn't make it for, if they had conflicts or if they were sick. So everyone's getting this training, and we're moving this forward, and we're all on board with at least an hour's worth of training each year on this particular topic, plus all the training that they do just by the schools, because each year, the school has to review all the security procedures, the drill procedures, all those different things, and the school security plans with their entire staff, and they have to sign off that they did this by September 15th of each year. So they have building stuff, and then we have our district-level stuff, so. I can't speak highly enough about how, what a great job the Chief and Evan did. We did a survey of the staff after, have already received over a hundred replies, and the replies back have been really astoundingly positive about how great they think it is that we're out there, we're talking about this, and we don't just, you know, pretend that it's not out there. So I think that goes along with the Security Committee. It's a good, good thing to see that we're really taking it seriously and trying to do everything we can to keep people safe.
Great, thank you. Anyone else?
I got a, yeah, it's something I missed, the nurses' report slipped by me a little too, fell a little fast. I have a question about that. There's some, there's some large disparities, I suspect, in just how things are being reported. For instance, the, Lakeview has half again as many students sent home, as opposed, you know, if you compare for their, if you correct for the increased number of, almost twice as many kids as River View. Lakeview has half again as many kids sent home, and is it really true that there are no pupils in Lakeview getting daily insulin or daily medication? There's some weird numbers in the nurses' report, and I'm wondering who I need to talk to to get some clarification.
You talk to me. As a matter of fact, what I will do, I will, in this Friday's email to everyone, I will re-put out that whole thing that we did, is the presentation.
You weren't on the board yet, because you actually had them coming to the meeting a little bit.
What I'll do, David, it'll make it a lot easier for you, is the nurse, the head nurse came in and gave a presentation on this report, exactly what each field meant and how they get their information. I'll put that same presentation out again this Friday. It should answer your questions. If it doesn't answer your questions, shoot me an email, and I'll see if I can get the questions answered.
Thank you. Thanks. I just have a couple of things. At Mrs. Lindsay's invitation, I attended the New Jersey School Board's Legislative Session last week. This is the session where they basically ask for board members' input on the two, next two-year legislative agenda, things that are important to boards like us, and they asked for our input, and they're coming up with an agenda that's gonna be basically the roadmap for the next two years with the legislators, in terms of things that obviously help us, things that hurt us, things we'd like to see, things that, you know, that are onerous to us, so hopefully, that will make an impact. They are also looking at trying to mobilize board members. I think we also, we have the app or the text, where they'll be able to text us when there's an issue that's important to us, that we will hopefully be able to reach out to legislators and try to have our voice heard. So that was an excellent meeting. On the same vein, the Morris County, New Jersey School Board's meeting is this Thursday, the 29th. I'm not gonna be able to make it, because we have a negotiating session. If any of you can make it, I highly encourage you to go. It's a good time, and I think this one is about common core, right? The presentation?
Yeah, and thank you for remembering that, and I think I, I believe I will all raise my hands for that, and I'm not gonna be able to make it this Thursday either. But it is, I think it's 15:00, parenting, and state enforcement is coming in to explain the process, and it has arose, so, yeah, it'll be very important.
What time and where is that?
This, I can get you that information. I think it's back at the villa, is it back here in Mountain Lakes again, or is it? Well, I can get you the information. They alternate their location.
I believe it starts at, I have it on the calendar, hold on, sorry. It starts at, okay.
I think they register at 6:30, and they start at 7:00.
Yeah, and it starts at 7:00, and it starts with a meal, because they've worked out that schedule, like it could be done soon. I'm thinking it probably is at the villa, if they have the board.
There's a second place, right? I think.
They alternate between the villas and a local school district in Morris County. I'll forward you the-
One of us will get you the info.
I may be able to, I may be able to make it if nobody else can. So if you give me the information, I'll start working on-
You can always have up to three board members there, so you don't have to worry about being there with somebody else. I'll forward you the-
Great, thank you.
Morris County, it's the county-
It's the county meeting.
It's the Morris County meeting.
All right, and do you have to pre-register? Can you just go that night?
You can even-
You can just show up that night? You can pre-register?
It's easier to pre-register.
It's easier to get your credit, if you're interested to show up.
But you can sign up there, yeah, they always have somebody at the door.
Yeah.
Okay. And the last thing is, again, I wanted to reiterate something Mr. Forte said, is thank you to all the staff, both our staff and town personnel, for clearing the streets and getting us to school today. Obviously, a lot of towns didn't manage that, so this was a tremendous effort. I thought the schools looked great, and obviously, the town roads were great, so thank you to everyone who pitched in to make that happen. And that's all I have. There's nothing else. I will open up for public comments at 8:07. If you have anything that is germane to the district, please approach the podium, sign in, and just say your name and address for the record. I'll maybe press the button now.
I have a statement and a question about the procedure the Board of Ed has in place for HIB investigations. Please note, I will not mention any information about the investigation at hand beyond my daughter's involvement as a witness and how she was handled by school staff. I'm directing my comments to the board, because per the State Bill of Rights Act, found on the website, the Board of Ed must develop the HIB policy through a process that includes representation of parents or guardians, school employees, volunteers, students, administrators, and community representatives. My child is an 11-year-old fifth-grade student, and she was called as a witness in an HIB investigation. During class, my child's teacher was called and told to send my daughter to the school counselor's office, where she was met by the counselor and vice principal. While there, my daughter was questioned about an HIB incident. At the conclusion of the questioning, my daughter was told that if she spoke about the incident or anything that took place in the office, she could also be in trouble, and she was then sent back to class. After my daughter's return to class, another child was called out to the counselor, and upon that child's return, the teacher told her and my daughter that although he did not know what was going on, he did not want them working together in math group just to be safe. I believe the overt secrecy with which these investigations were conducted made a spectacle of the children that were involved. Children were publicly removed from and returned to class, where they are left alone to deal with speculation of teachers and questions from peers. They cannot respond in any way, because they've been threatened with punishment if they speak about the incident. Our teachers, just in case restrictive actions, revealed that speculations do occur and assumptions are made. In addition, another parent stated the children questioned were the only kids in the class not talking about the incident. This highlights what the children must deal with from classmates, and I don't understand why we are forcing an 11-year-old to shoulder the burden of secrecy for this investigation. Consider the following possible after-effects of assumption and speculation by teachers and classmates. If she was assumed the bully, someone may be quick to perceive her as an antagonist in a future event. If it is assumed she was the one being bullied, she could be perceived as a complainer and disregarded if she faces her own future challenges. If it is assumed she is a witness, she could easily be perceived as a tattletale by classmates. Seeing things handled in such a public way could also have a negative impact on a child who is being bullied. They may decide they not want, they do not want to be part of a spectacle, decide that privately struggling with their challenge is preferable to having their conflict played out in front of the whole class. HIV investigations are legal inquiries, which involve the Denville Police. They can result in serious consequences for the accused child if he or she is found guilty, and I find it odd that they are conducted without parental knowledge or consent. I was never informed by the school about my daughter's participation as a witness in the investigation, and I found out only from her and another parent, and then I contacted the school for information. When she and I spoke about it, she was upset that the counselor told her she could be in trouble, and she was upset that she could not work in math group with her classmate. Since a parent is not present, it seems to me, at the very least, the school counselor should be the child's advocate during the inquest. However, procedure caused my daughter to feel isolated, and even worse, she stated she felt threatened by the counselor. So my question is this: Why are these investigations being conducted this way? Wouldn't it be better for all involved to have these investigations happen outside of school hours? No one aside from the parties involved would need to become aware there is a situation. Teachers and counselors would not have to worry about how a child looks, feels, acts, or what they may say in class after the investigations are concluded. Parents could be a calming presence for their child, if not in the room, outside it, waiting to be supportive, supportive when they are finished. And time can be taken afterward, at home, for a parent to fully explain why it's inappropriate to speak on the subject at hand. Quick explanations, which come across as threats, would not need to be issued. I've spoken with parents and children involved in this and other HIB investigations in Denville schools, and unfortunately, our experience was not unique. Others have had similar concerns with procedure. So for this reason, I hope the board will take the time to do a serious review of Denville's HIB investigation procedures, with intent to possibly make this challenging task less stressful for all the participants, especially the children. I thank you for your time, and I welcome any questions or comments about the information that I presented to you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for bringing this to us.
I, my comment would be, it's the first I've heard of it. I would have no problem bringing it back to the principal to find out exactly what happened. I don't know if you did that yet, because it wasn't brought to my attention. If this is the first time you're bringing it up, obviously, we're gonna need some time to find out exactly what's going on.
When my daughter came to me, I spoke, I sent an email to the counselor, the teacher, and I believe I probably, they used it on it as well, that I just wanted to find out what had happened at school, and I did receive a call back from the council. So it's not the first that they've heard from me on it.
Well, here's my question to you, then. If there was a situation that you explained, and you emailed them, and they got back to you, was the answer back to you that this is the policy, and we need to follow the policy, so that's why it's brought to this forum, because this is the policy board?
It was.
Because that, all right, now I kinda understand what you're saying. Okay.
That kind of a question. I got a little bit of confusing information from the counselor, to be honest.
Sure.
A little bit of conflicting information from the counselor, and she, that was kind of just what she was saying, that was policy. So when I did look up on the website, it indicated that it is the board that sets the policy, the input from other people. So I thought that this was the appropriate-
Sure.
To, and they said it, it's a statement.
Sure.
This was my experience, and it, I've spoken with people who have had similar experiences, and it seems to me that there's been some, when, when I'm talking to people who seem to be upset about some parts of the process in a way that they're handled. So I just asked that to be looked into, you know, to be sure that we're doing it in the best way that we can, for a few of the reasons that I outlined, why my child found it challenging, why I found it challenging, and, you know, I can only speak for myself and my daughter and what our exact experience was. I'm not going to speak for other people's experience, except we say that I put some more comments, but this was our experience, this was unpleasant, just as a witness, this says an 11-year-old person who has asked a question about a situation, and it was unpleasant and challenging and threatening for her. So I just wanted to make that known, but maybe it's something that needs to be looked at, the procedures that are being followed, if the procedure that is set by this board is causing the counselors and teachers to act in a certain way, you know, the most procedures I think needs to be looked at, because they can cost very much.
We can definitely look at the policy and the procedures with the staff. In this particular case, this particular policy that we have, the majority of it comes directly from a law that was passed a few years ago, and I do have the unique ability, I mean, experiences of being in the third district, working in my third district now under this new law, and the complaint you had was common in all three districts, that, and normally, the complaint comes from the witness, the parents of witnesses, because they're being drawn into this big legal process. So I will have, I will get in touch with the administration at Lakeview to start a discussion on how, what exactly went on here, and we'll start talking about that, and then the board can take a look at the policy and see if there's anywhere that needs, anything that needs to be changed. I do want to say that just this summer, we spent a half-day training with all administrators and counselors on how to conduct investigations. So we do this often. People go, we have in-house, and we send them out. So we've sent, we've sent all of our staff to training at, we used, there's two big, there's two big ones. We used PSA, right, for this, FEA, and then we also have the one at the school- So, let me find out a little bit about this, and, and your last name was Galucci, correct?
Colucci.
Colucci, okay.
Steve O'Dell.
Got it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else?
Hi, we're Simone Giswaldo and Christine Giswaldo. We live at ten Rocky Heights Road, and we agree with Mrs. Colucci. Um, our daughter, Gabriella, was the one that was accused of harassment, intimidation, and bullying. And, um, she was found innocent of all charges, thank God. But, um, your process, and I know you guys do your best in, in any way you can, the process kind of made her into a victim. Um, it's, it's affected her adversely, personality, um.
She was a vibrant child. She loved going to school. She had great grades. Her grades have fallen now. Um, she doesn't want to take the school bus, she doesn't want to go to school. Um, things are still being said by other children to her. She's removed herself from that group of children. She's made new friends. Um, however, children are coming up to her, talking about this incident. Prior to, um, all of this, she was warned by another child that she will be getting in trouble, that this mother was going to be writing, writing a letter to the school. And, um.
Before it even happened?
Yes. So, and I have text messages from the mother, who is upset with me, and basically has told me that she would be, um, watch out. Two days later, then we receive a phone call from Mrs. Basely. I would like to know how we can protect my daughter from this, or I have four children in this school district, how I can protect the four of them from something like this happening again where this mother, parent is upset with another parent and takes it out on a child.
Is, is, um, you said your daughter was accused?
She was, yes.
Okay. This is probably, I, I don't, I really would rather not talk to you about this in public. I'll, I'll answer, I'm just afraid I'm going to slip with stuff, because I know stuff about this case. I'm, I don't want to slip and put something out there that is, is, uh, something that shouldn't be in public. Do you know what I mean? So, I, I appreciate you bringing it to me, and I understand, we will look at it. And your last name was Giswaldo?
Yes.
Okay, so we will be back to both families with whatever we find out.
Okay.
But I'm just, I don't want to have, I don't want to have a public discussion about this, and there, there, because we have so little of this, too, we, I want to make sure that we don't, that everybody, other people in the audience or on the TV know what we're talking about, because they may. So, I'd rather not talk about it like that, if it's, if you're okay with that.
We understand. We agree with Mrs. Colucci. The process maybe can be improved. We weren't allowed to be part of it. They said that whatever happens, happens, you have to just stand back and wait for the results.
However, that was at least, yeah.
Yeah. But they were very nice. I mean, Mrs. Basely is wonderful.
Sure. We'll be back to you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, I'm going to close the public portion of the meeting at eight twenty-four and open up for board comments.
Yes. I ran into Mr. Parisian today, a former board member, before I forget. He asked me to say hello to everybody on his behalf, and, uh, he misses you, Walter, except for me. But he, he did ask to send his regards to everybody.
Okay. Anyone else?
I guess, I'd like to thank people for coming out and talking to us about something that's obviously dear folks to talk about, like about people coming forward and can't separate dialogue with you, like us past, because we don't really do that. So, thank you, both, all of you, for coming out to talk to us.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Um, at this time, we have a need for executive, go back to executive session. Mr. Luer, would you care to move us again into executive session?
Sure. I still move to convene an executive session in accordance with section eight of the Open Public Meetings Act. The purpose of this closed session will be to discuss all three.
Negotiate.
Legal negotiations.
Negotiations and legal. Minutes of this session will be made available to the public when the need for confidentiality no longer exists.
All in favor?
Nays.
Any nays? Okay. We're in executive session.
Okay, we're out of executive session. Do I have a motion to adjourn meeting? Have a second?
All second.
All in favor?
Nays.
Any nays? We have votes on fourteen.